City Council Meeting for May 14, 2019 is hereby called up order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderman Garza. Alderman Maziacos.
Here.
Alderman Denell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman here.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderman LaFche.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman O'Connor.
Here.
Eleven present.
Please rise, we have a moment of silence in honor of our active servicemen and servicewomen, as well as our veterans. Please remain standing as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be followed by the invocation, which will be provided by Pastor Aseer Yahn from the First Mong Alliance Church. Moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and every right.
Let us close our eyes and bow our heads, let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we bless your name. How majestic is your name in all the earth. You are holy, righteous, and just. You are perfect in all your ways. Your love is everlasting. You have loved us with an everlasting love. Thank you for drawing us to you with your loving kindness. Your kingdom is righteousness, peace, and joy. May your kingdom come. May your will be done here on earth as it is in heaven. Thank you, Father, for our daily bread, for your provisions each and every day. Thank you for the sun and the rain. Thank you for the breath of life. Thank you especially for the provision of your one and only Son, Jesus Christ, who died in our place for our sins and was raised on the third day. Thank you, Father, for forgiving our debts, which was made possible when we accept by faith the atoning sacrifice of our Lord Jesus Christ. Help us, oh God, to forgive our debtors, those who wronged, offended, or sinned against us. Lead us not into temptation, to do wickedly, to not do what is right, to carry on injustice, or to do evil, but deliver us from evil and the evil one. Father, I pray for our mayor, Mayor Irvin, and our city council members. Father, would you grant them wisdom, discernment, clarity of thought, as they lead our city to do what is right, according to the laws which governs us? That which, that, that we may live in peace with one another, that our lives may be filled with joy and happiness. Father, would you protect their, our leaders, their spouses, and families? Grant them good health, so that they can carry out their duties to the best of their abilities. Today, as we gather to celebrate our diversity, would you grant us unity as one people in our wonderful city? Let us be a city of lights, shining as an example for all others to see. Father, let your, let yours be the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Yahn. Is there motion approved? The minutes Tuesday, Friday, Thursday, 2019, City Council Meeting. Moved by Alderman Hardburn, second by Alderman Franco, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion approved? The quiet of Sergeant Arms for the meeting. Motion by Alderman Hardburn, second by Alderman Franco, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so let's go on to presentations, Mr. Muhammad.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Thank you to all our guests and staff and business partners for being with us tonight. Tonight, we honor two months. We will honor National Military Appreciation Month by honoring some of our young leaders here in Aurora who have enlisted in the military. There's forty of them in total tonight, and that deserves a round of applause. And particularly, we've got to give it to them. Month of May is also National Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and we will issue the proclamation for the first time in the city of Aurora. As mayor issues the proclamation, we've invited over our staff members and community members to join us right in the center of the stage. If you can please join us. Again, Pastor Yahn from First Mong and his family, please join us. Sofia Lo, come on down. Our staff members who are here, please come on down. Tara Amy Matthews and Robert from APD. And we have our wonderful business partners from Winphone Pacific Square, Judy, please come on down as well. We both can come on down there. We could form a line straight through. Proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
It is my pleasure. It is my pleasure to read this proclamation, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas during Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, AAPI, we celebrate the accomplishments of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders, and reflect on the many ways that AAPI community has enriched our country and city. And whereas like America itself, the AAPI community draws strength from the diversity of its many distinct cultures. They embody the soaring aspirations of the American spirit, and their story is the American story. And whereas this month marks a hundred and fifty years since the final spike was hammered into the transcontinental railroad, an achievement made possible by Chinese labors, this is just one example of the impact and influence the AAPI community has had on the fortitude of our nation. And whereas today, with courage, grit, and abiding belief in American ideals, Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders have challenged our nation to better and have made our Aurora community a much more vibrant place. And whereas the AAPI of Aurora is an integral part of our tapestry, from education, business, government, arts, to entertainment and religion, including our own City of Aurora employees, community partners, business partners, students, and supporters. And whereas Aurora is proud of the continued growth and involvement of our AAPI community, and is proud to be the home of Pacific Square, the largest Asian-themed shopping center in America, which will be a distinction, a destination from the AAPI community and others from throughout the nation. Now, therefore I, Richard C. Irvin, Mayor of the City of Aurora, Illinois, on behalf of the Aurora City Councils, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2019, to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month here in the city of Aurora. Please give the applause.
Again, for the first time in the history of Aurora, proclaiming the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Big round of applause. This is for Aurora, it's proud of the scene of diversity and the scene of inclusion and the importance of your participation. And that's for you. Thank you so much, everyone. Give them a round of applause as they take their seats. So, thank you. And Mayor, our next presentation, our Valor Awards. We're going to ask the Deputy Mayor to please come down and join us. Our Chief Information Officer, as a veteran, please come down and join us as well. Mr. Larry, head of AVAC, if you can come down and join us. Thank you. We're going to ask you three to stand right here and greet the students as they come down. Mike will hand you the... This month is National Military Appreciation Month, and we have a number of activities through our Aurora Veterans Advisory Council that we'll be publicizing that go on throughout the month of May. In particular, our Memorial Day Parade at the City of Aurora, Monday, May 27th, at noon. But we also have the opportunity to celebrate a group of young people who are servant leaders already. And as they head off to serve and protect this nation and the branches of the military, we want to make certain that they know that Aurora is always home, and we look forward to seeing them when they return. So we can give these group of young leaders another round of applause. We have a reception for them. We're welcome to the reception immediately following the awards ceremony. So tonight, we have representatives of branches of the military. There's one representative of the Air Force, three from the Navy, nine from the Army, ten from the Marines, and seventeen from the Army National Guard, who are here to look after today. Representing seven high schools as well, Kainland, Equal Valley, Oswego East, Wobonzie Valley, Matia Valley, East Aurora High School, and West Aurora High School as well. Representing the campus of the city of Aurora. And so tonight, they will receive the Valor Award on behalf of the Mayor and the Aurora City Council and the Valor Medal, that you can take with you as you remember your city and how much we love and appreciate and respect you for your decision. So we're going to ask parents to applaud, because they're all of our children, as we go through the list. Beginning with, if you can please come down, we'll shake the hands of our Deputy Mayor, Chuck Nelson, our head of our Veterans Advisory Council, and our Chief Information Officer, who are both veterans as well, and Mayor Irvin, of course, who is a veteran as well. First, from Matia Valley High School, headed to the Army National Guard, Roland Asama Cat. If you can stay standing all the way down after you, we'll do an individual picture with the mayor. And then if you can stay standing until we release you. From Oswego East, headed to the Army, Alexandra Besson. Roland, if you can stay up there. From West Aurora High School, to the Army National Guard, Joseph Bradshaw. From Matia Valley High School, to the Army National Guard, Kevin Branch. West Aurora High School, to the Marine Corps, Adrian Xavier Bustamante. He couldn't make it tonight, he fell ill. From Kainland, headed to the Army, we'll still give a round of applause to Evan Carlson. Headed to the Marine Corps, from Wobonzie Valley High School, Matthew Carmody. Headed to the Army National Guard, from Matia Valley, Brian Casares. We're going to take a small group picture of eight after Brian, and we'll do the group picture at the Paramount. One more round of applause for the first eight of our Valor Awards recipients. If there are any veterans of the United States Armed Forces in the room, can you please stand to be recognized? All veterans, please stand up and wave your hand. Veterans, please stand. Let's give them a round of applause for our veterans. Thank God, thank you. Give you one group shot. Thank you, maybe seated. From Matia Valley High School, to the Army National Guard, Chase Costanza. From East Aurora High School, to the United States Navy, Aleah Curry. From Oswego East High School, to the United States Army, Brian Robert DiBenetti. From East Aurora High School, to the United States Army, Michaela Gardner. Headed to the Army National Guard, from Wobonzie Valley High School, Kenneth Gill. From West Aurora High School, to the Army National Guard, Jaime Hernandez Jr. Headed to the Army National Guard, from Equal Valley, Eugene Jang. From West Aurora High School, headed to the United States Army, Dominic James Jernstadt. From Oswego East, to the United States Marine Corps, Jack Clonominos. From East Aurora High School, headed to the Army National Guard, Christopher Loggins. From Wobonzie Valley High School, also to the Army National Guard, Marita Luis Mampa. We'll do a group shot here. Another round of applause for these amazing young leaders. As we keep bringing you on down, from Oswego East High School, headed to Marine Corps, Mary McGavin. From West Aurora High School, to the United States Army, Emmanuel Moncava. Also from West Aurora High School, to the Army National Guard, Jennifer Moreles. From East Aurora High School, to the Army National Guard, the former leader of the East Aurora ROTC, the largest unit in the country, Javier Munoz. Also from the Landon Tomcats East Eye, headed to the Navy, Ezekio Ochoa. From Matia Valley High School, headed to the Army National Guard, Daisy Penigua. Also from Matia Valley High School, headed to the Marine Corps, Daniel Peast. From East Aurora High School, headed to the United States Navy, Francisco Rojas. And from East Aurora High School, to the Army National Guard, Michael Rojas. We'll do a group shot here. Round of applause for this group of young leaders. From West Aurora High School, headed to the Marine Corps, Lorenzo Saldana. Also from West Aurora High School, headed to the United States Air Force, Bradley Chadrone. From Oswego East, headed to the Marine Corps, Thomas Silva. From Wobonzie Valley High School, to the Army National Guard, Kai Simos. From Equal Valley, to the Army National Guard, Ricky Song. Also from Equal Valley, to the Army National Guard, Magdalena Stromigno. From Wobonzie Valley High School, headed to the United States Army, Drayvon Turner. We'll do a group shot here. A round of applause for this group of young leaders. From West Aurora High School, to the Marine Corps, Alexis Valdez. From Matia Valley High School, to the United States Army, Aaron Williams. From East Aurora High School, to the United States Marine Corps, Jaylen Wilson. From Matia Valley, to the Army Reserve, Brianna Wong. From West Aurora High School, to the United States Marines, Raul Zavala. Another round of applause for our last group of honored leaders. We don't forget you, Raul. Another round of applause for Raul Zavala. We're proud of you, man. Again, as a city, ladies and gentlemen, we're very proud of you. We're proud of your decision, and we wish you the best as you go out and continue to serve and protect our nation.
The reason we do this every year is because we want to show that we are proud of our young men and women who decide to give their service to the United States military. Whatever branch you're in, you are protecting us, you're protecting our interests, you are protecting the United States of America. I served in the United States Army, and actually was stationed in Saudi Arabia during the Gulf War. So I recognize the value of what you're doing, and I just appreciate it. We all appreciate everything you do, every, every person that's in here that's a veteran, every person that knows a veteran, every person that's related to a veteran. We appreciate your sacrifice, and we love you, and we look forward to you coming back to visit after you, after you get out of the military. Come say hi to us in the mayor's office, I look forward to it. So congratulations again. We look forward to partying with you across the street and celebrating you going into the military.
Parents and adults, if we could give them a standing ovation for their commitment to service, and we thank you. Round of applause for these forty young leaders who are headed off to the United States Air Force, to the United States Navy, to the United States Army, to the Army National Guard, and to the United States Marine. Representing Kainland High School, Equal Valley High School, Oswego East High School, Wobonzie Valley High School, Matia Valley High School, East Aurora High School, and West Aurora High School. All of us representing Aurora together. Thank you, Valor Award recipients. When the mayor releases you, we invite you and ask you all to come to the Paramount, where we'll do a group photo with our photographers, where there's music and food, and we're just going to celebrate you. Also, at the Memorial Day Parade on Monday, the 27th, the mayor invites all of you, all forty of you, to join him and his unit in the parade. And so the same way you are VP, if you'd like to be in the parade, walking with the mayor, representing your school, your city, and your branch of the military, with a veteran of the United States Army, please let us know, and we'd be honored to have you there. Another round of applause for our Valor Award recipients.
So at this time, we have a few housekeeping matters that we have to attend to before we come over and celebrate with you across the street at the Paramount. So at this time, if you guys want to head over there, we'll meet you over there a little later when we're, when we're done.
Deputy Mayor, you want to grab those doors, those doors for us? Thank you, sir. Looks like everyone has filed out, and the folks that are going to stay are present, so let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Clerk, will you now please read the consent agenda in full?
Item 19-0130, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class A City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Chilax Aurora, Illinois. Chilax Aurora LLC, doing business as Chilax 4302 East New York Street Aurora. Item 19-0170, a resolution approving a revision to the preliminary plan and plan for property located at Haven Richter Road, east of Barrington Drive, and west of White Thorne Drive. Item 19-0213, an ordinance granting a special use permit for a liquor license within five hundred feet of residential property on the property located at 1271 North Lake Street, generally located on the east side of Lake Street, north of Indian Trail Road. Item 19-0227, an ordinance approving a revision to the new song Highland's Plan Description on sixteen point one three six acres for property located north of Haven Richter Road, east of Barrington Drive, and west of White Thorne Drive. Item 19-0239, an ordinance establishing a special use plan development at fifteen hundred South Lawn Place, and fifteen oh one South Lawn Place to be incorporated under the existing 2018 Aurora University Plan Description. Item 19-0240, resolution approving a final plan and granting a setback variance on Lot One of Aurora University's second three subdivision located at thirteen thirty Marcel A Place for a one thousand ninety square foot addition to the Perrellini Music Center. Item 19-0269, a resolution to accept the proposal from Segway Incorporated, Fourteenth Technology Drive, Bedford, New Hampshire, for the purchase of two Segway SE3 Patrolers Police for the Aurora Police Department. Item 19-0271, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class D3 City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Fox Valley Music Foundation, doing business as The Venue, twenty-one South Broadway, Aurora, Illinois, six zero five zero six. Item 19-20275, a resolution requesting approval to purchase Bentec Master Software as a Service, SaaS, as our benefits, enrollment, and administration software, including licenses, payroll integration, and services in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Item 19-0283, a resolution authorizing modification one to Community Development Graph Subrecipient Agreement, CDVG 2017-02, for the Safety First Program. Item 19-0285, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education and East Aurora School, District Number One. District Number One Thirty-One, Kane County, Illinois, regarding the relocation of the district's administrative offices. Item nineteen dash zero two eight six, an ordinance amending Chapter Thirty of the City of Aurora Code of Ordnance entitled Parks and Recreation. Item nineteen dash zero two nine seven, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to purchase a new valve maintenance trailer from EH Wax of Lincolnshire, Illinois. Item nineteen dash zero two nine nine, a resolution authorizing Trotsky Investigated Polygraph Incorporated as the provider for services of pre-employment polygraph assessments through December thirty-one, twenty nineteen. Item nineteen dash zero three zero one, a resolution authorizing Stenard and Associates as a provider for services of pre-employment psychological assessments through December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Item nineteen dash zero three zero eight, a resolution authorizing a change order for Crowhorwath LLP, Oakbrook, Illinois, for the Public Safety Hexagon CAD RMS Project in the amount of three hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred, three hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred thousand dollars. Item nineteen dash zero three one three, a resolution authorization to accept the bid from Superior Asphalt Materials LLC, North Aurora, Illinois, in the citywide asphalt purchase program. Item nineteen dash zero three one four, a resolution authorization, the purchase of bulk rock salt in the amount of eighty-two dollars and ninety-six cents per ton for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty winter season from Compass Materials America Incorporated, Overland Park, Kansas. Item nineteen dash zero three one five, a resolution to award the contract for the South Fordham Avenue and Lancaster Avenue Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project to Superior Excavating Company, four-two-four San Carlos Road, Manuka, Illinois, six zero four four seven, in the amount of three hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and zero cents. Item nineteen dash zero three one six, a resolution accepting the improvements and waiving the normally required maintenance security in period four Aurora Corporate Center Public Sidewalk for lots two, three, and five. Item nineteen dash zero three one seven, a resolution authorizing exterior repairs to the Elmsley Building located at One South Broadway, Aurora, Illinois. Item nineteen dash zero three two one, a resolution of the City of Aurora through the Aurora Police Department, authorizing the execution of the Illinois Telecommunicator Emergency Response Task Force Intergovernmental Agreement. Item nineteen dash zero three two five, an ordinance amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty eighteen, and ending December thirty-one, twenty eighteen. Amendment number two for the twenty eighteen fiscal year. Item nineteen dash zero three two six, a resolution authorizing director of purchasing to enter into agreements with Alarm Detection Systems Incorporated, eleven eleven Church Road, Aurora, Illinois, six zero five zero five, not to exceed eighty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars for smoke detention, detection, and security systems for four city buildings, including the Development Services Center, DSC, located at seventy-seven South Broadway. Item nineteen dash zero three two nine, a resolution authorizing expenditures in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars for purchase and installation of helical piers for observation decks for Maston Island from Techno Metal Post Iliana LLC, Chicago, Illinois. Item nineteen dash zero three three three, a resolution authorizing the purchase of pollution liability insurance for the period of March thirty-one, twenty nineteen, through March thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Item nineteen dash zero three three five, approval of a motion authorizing tax increment financing District Tiff feasibility studies Broadway and Colina, ULP Aurora LLC, Benton River Street, eighty South River LLC, and Ogden and Seventy-Fifth Street Town Center Associates LLC using the services of Kane McKenna.
If there are no motions to remove items from the consent agenda, there's been a motion to approve Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. If there being no further questions, clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Yamas.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Masiakos.
Yes, with an abstention from line item nineteen dash zero two eight five.
So noted. Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman LaFche.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Eleven A's, zero N's with the abstention noted for item nineteen dash zero two eight five from Alderman Masiakos.
Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Clerk, can we go on to new business? There mostly spin the rules, consider items under new business section of the agenda?
Second.
Been a motion by Alderman Jenkins, seconded by Alderman Franco. Will the clerk please call the room?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderman Garza. I apologize. Alderman Masiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman LaFche.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Eleven A's, zero N's.
All right, motion carries. Clerk, will you please call the first item under new business?
Item nineteen dash zero three eight two, a resolution to approve the purchase of three wheelchair accessible golf carts from Nadler Golf Car Sales Incorporated in the amount of forty thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty cents, and direction to staff to solicit informal bids in accordance with city procurement procedures for the remaining improvements to increase accessibility at River Edge Park for persons with disabilities, as approved by the State of Illinois, as part of a Department of Commerce and Economic Development grant.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the room?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderman Masiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman LaFche.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Eleven A's, zero N's.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Clerk, can you read the next item under new business?
Item nineteen dash zero four zero two, a motion authorizing the execution of a final settlement agreement with Barsha Thakkar.
Motion by Alderman Jenkins, seconded by Alderman Hartburns. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this motion? There being no further questions, the clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderman Masiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman LaFche.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Eleven A's, zero N's.
All right, motion carries. Motion is approved. Can you read the next item under new business?
Item nineteen dash zero four zero four, a motion authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement between the city and Cyrus One LLC in the matter of Cyrus One LLC versus the City of Aurora, Illinois, and Scientel Solution LLC. Case number eighteen dash C V dash two seven two, United States District Court for Northern Illinois, District of Illinois. Case number nineteen dash fifteen twenty-seven, United States Court of Appeals for the Seventh District.
There's a motion by Alderman Jenkins, seconded by Alderman Hartburns. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this motion? There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the room?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderman Masiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman LaFche.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Eleven A's, zero N's.
Motion carries and the motion is approved. Can you read the next item?
Item nineteen dash zero four zero six, election of the mayor pro tem pursuant to Section Two dash thirty-nine of the City Code.
Someone can read the language?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, under the ordinance, unless the city council wishes to defer this to two weeks, it would be in order for your honor to open nominations for the Office of Mayor Pro Tem, except nominations for the floor and to adopt a roll call vote on that.
I don't know that any aldermen have had the opportunity to talk about it. Do we want to defer this for two weeks? There's been a nomination on the floor of Bob O'Connor, by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Masiakos. Is there any discussion? Are there any additional nominations? Clerk, will you call the room? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no other nominations, if you would declare the nominations to be closed and see, without objection?
Is there any objection to the nomination being closed at this time with only one nomination on the floor?
I move we close the nominations?
There's been a motion to close the nominations by Alderman Denell, seconded by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We dissect Alderman O'Connor by acclamation.
There's been a motion to accept Alderman O'Connor as the sole nominee, by Alderman Bug, seconded by Alderman Shakita Hartburns. Clerk, are there any questions or discussion? I asked for the question discussion. Alderman O'Connor, would you like to have some questions or discussion? I can let you borrow my...
If Alderman Jenkins is asking for my withdrawal, no, I'm not withdrawing. I'm very honored to accept the nomination. I'm very honored for the motion to do it by acclamation. It has been obviously my pleasure to serve as mayor pro tem. Hopefully, I've done a reasonably good job on your ratings. I would look forward to continue to do so, and I thank you very much for the confidence of the council in doing this.
So it sounds as though Alderman O'Connor has accepted the nomination. If there's no further question or discussion, the clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderman Masiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman LaFche.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Eleven A's, zero N's.
All right, motion carries and it's an ordinance. Ordinance is adopted. Clerk, can you read the next item under new business?
That is the final item under new business. However, we do have an item under unfinished business.
All right, clerk, can you read the first item under unfinished business?
Item nineteen dash zero one three eight, an ordinance revising Chapter Two, Article Two, Division Five of the Code of the City of Aurora, pertaining to the number, composition, jurisdiction, and procedures of the committees of the city council.
Someone? So there's been a motion by Alderman Seville, seconded by Alderman Hartburns. Are there any questions or discussions on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman O'Connor. Oh, I'm sorry, here you go.
We've had considerable discussion, I think, at the committee, the whole, and at this point, I think any further discussion would just come in the form of of the amendments that would be proposed. I will be proposing an amendment. It is on your system here. There are three amendments that were to be proposed. If the totality of the three of them, if they are adopted, would essentially do two things. One would be to have the standing committees consist of five aldermen. The second part would be the designation of the mayor pro tem to serve on the Rules and Procedures Committee, with the understanding that if that person was unable to serve, the most senior alderman on the council would take that place. The three amendments are introduced, will be put together because each of them has a little slightly different language in regard to what I've indicated as, I think, the actual result here. Mr. Mayor, I would move an amendment to Section Two dash one-two-three under Standing Committee that A, the city council is organized into the standing committee set forth in this section. Each standing committee shall consist of five aldermen, and except in cases of a long-term absence or disability of any member of the council, each alderman shall serve on at least one, but no more than three standing committees. So move.
Second.
All right, so there's been a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Alderman Franco.
I would like to object to the portion of the amendment that Alderman O'Connor made with the mayor pro tem being the person, designated person to serve on the... Oh, I'm sorry. Well, then I apologize. Could you repeat the part about where you talked about if somebody was to save, I mean, I'm sorry, I guess I wanted to...
I was summarizing what is going to come in the three amendments.
Oh, okay. So you just, I'm sorry.
And the first one deals strictly with the fact that the members of the committee will be the...
Aldermen.
Will be aldermen.
All right, so...
No, I'm sorry. I apologize. There's no discussion on that.
Counsel, if we could just break this down. So we said we have to separate all these, so we know what we're going on.
Exactly. Right now, Mr. Mayor, what is before the council is the amendment that's listed in the legislature right now, described as O'Connor one. This amendment changes the language proposed in Section Two dash one-twenty-three A by specifying that five aldermen in place of five members of the city council shall constitute the members of the standing committee. So the only question before the council at this time is whether or not it wishes to substitute the term aldermen for members of the city council.
Or change the language from shall to may?
That's not part of the amendment.
That's not part of this.
Mr. Alderman O'Connor made.
Alderman LaFche.
For point of clarification, O'Connor, Alderman O'Connor is going to use another amendment. It's going to say that each alderman shall serve on two committees, correct? After this...
Well, we're not yet. We're not there yet, yeah.
I know, but I want to understand the procedure. This says one to three, but is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all.
This one deals, the council, the preparation of council, it deals strictly with the issue of five members, of aldermanic members of the council.
Versus five members of this council.
Council.
Gotcha. So it's just a, effectively excludes the mayor. Right, by saying council members versus, I'm sorry, aldermen versus city council members.
Said very well.
So there's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this particular portion? So this one would change our ordinance as it has been since nineteen seventy-seven from city council members, which would include the mayor, to just aldermen, which would not include the mayor. All right, so in voting, so counsel, help me out, in voting, in voting yes or no, what do you get?
A yes vote accepts the language offered by Alderman O'Connor, which reduces the membership of the committees to five aldermen as opposed to five members of the council. With distinction, as you noted, the mayor is a member of the council and the mayor is not an alderman. So that is a difference.
Okay, so since seventy-seven, it's been council members. And now we're talking about changing it to just aldermen. I believe it should say council members, but go ahead. Alderman Jenkins, you need it?
As I mentioned at committee, the whole, you know, again, I think we're, we are setting ourselves to a point where it looks like, you know, we want to operate as a team. Now, I know it's, you know, not saying that directly, but, you know, sometimes the indication can be that, you know, like, we're, good thing we're not on the, at Congress and dealing with the president and all that situation we're here in Aurora. And I think from the standpoint of being able to say that, what we've had before has operated, has done well. We're Aurora strong, and we've made some great strides, and we will continue to make great strides. So I would not be voting in favor of this because I just don't think it's the kind of message that we need to be sending to anyone, whether here in Aurora or outside of Aurora. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll be voting against this.
Any other aldermen with any questions, concerns? So just to be clear, a yes would agree with Alderman O'Connor that you should change the language from nineteen seventy-seven to exclude councilmen and include aldermen. And no would, it would remain the same and be council members?
It would retain the language in the proposal as you described.
Gotcha. So with no further questions, clerk, we have a motion, a second. Clerk, do you want to call the room?
Alderman Yamas.
No.
Alderman Masiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
No.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
No.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman LaFche.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
No.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Seven A's, four N's.
All right, so the motion carries. The language is hereby stricken to only, well, to exclude council members into, say, aldermen. So let's move on to the next.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, Alderman O'Connor.
We have, with permission from the author originally of this, Alderman Masiakos, if I may introduce this. Amendment, this is an amendment to Section Two, one-twenty-three in regard to standing committees. I will read it. It's on your system again. A, the city council is organized into the standing committee set forth in this section. Each standing committee shall consist of five members of the city council, and except in the cases of a long-term absence or disability of any member of the council. And to the extent practicable, each alderman shall serve on two standing committees. I would so move that amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Second, so there's been a motion by Alderman O'Connor, seconded by Alderman LaFche. Do we have any questions? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Could I just explain? And for clarity, for the record, Alderman O'Connor, you're proposing to amend Section Two, one-twenty-three as previously amended a few moments ago.
Right. Counsel advised that by proposing this language, it... Council advised that by proposing this language, it amends the prior amendment in the sense of bringing them together as to what the intent is. And I just wanted to comment that the language, as to the extent practicable, I think gives the latitude that the mayor, I think, would, would be able to use in the event, by reason, whatever reason is presented, that an alderman will indicate that they could not serve on two committees or will not serve on two committees. I think that, in combination with the other language, dissipates or makes better the word shall, because that's the out, that's the door opening in the sense that if something is, is in that situation not workable, that the alderman indicates that to the mayor, the mayor then has the ability to make the change on the committee and re-nominate someone on the committee at that point, so...
Alderman Franco.
Yes, I'd like to ask Corporation Council, based on what Alderman O'Connor said, if we substituted, based on your opinion, if we substituted the word may for all that, would that be similar to the wording that's in there now? In essence, would that, would that give us the same desired results that Alderman O'Connor explained would probably happen or could happen?
If you were to amend, if you were to, rather than using the language before the committee right now or before the council right now, and it basically said each alderman may serve on two committees, that is a permissive, the may would be permissive, and it would, as drafted, without the extent practicable language, would put a limit on the number of committees an alderman could serve on as two. I mean, to the extent practical, it would be permissive. You almost need to have the two terms included in the same thing to accomplish, I think, with at least the alderman, Alderman O'Connor is proposing as part of this. I think Alderman O'Connor's intent is to generally require accepted exceptional circumstances, aldermanic service on two committees.
So, it would not negate a person from serving on three?
As drafted, this does not, if it were drafted, and, you know, it's difficult to speak of a hypothetical when you have something directly in front of you with a may, depending on what else you had in there, it would also permit that as well.
Yeah, and I, I think my point is, although I appreciate Alderman O'Connor's position in talking about the issue of fairness, as I pointed out earlier, this isn't about being fair, this is about making sure that we handle the business of the city. And I don't know that Alderman O'Connor should, I don't believe that we should make a determination that an alderman be required to serve on two, that if, in the alderman's inability, for whatever reason, to serve on two, that the mayor have the ability to point between one and three. The average person probably serve on two, but there will be those that don't necessarily have the capability of serving on two. So, I would request that the language remain, remain the same as originally intended, as originally offered, that the mayor have the ability to point between one and three aldermen to committees.
This will take us back to the day of debate, back and forth, point, counterpoint. Just real quickly, I, I have expressed to the mayor, I've expressed to the council, where I simply believe if we're making this significant of a change in regard to the constitution of the, of the committees, that I think it's the responsible thing to have two members serve, or have a member serve on two committees, and with the understanding that I think the language here is broad enough now to allow a alderman not to have to serve on a committee, and if this happens a number of times, then it quite obviously, there should be some language change in this regard. But I think undertaking a new system, and I have heard or not heard from any alderman that they would not be willing to serve on two committees, and I think that the feeling is to keep the balance, rather than have a number of aldermen serve on three committees and a number of aldermen serve on only one committee, that the intent originally is fulfilled here by having the service on the two committees with this, this outlet, this ability to have some flexibility on the mayor's part at that point.
Any aldermen have any questions, comments?
About what is your concern in reference to each alderman may versus each alderman shall, sir?
I think the...
No, I'm sorry.
I, I think the language in this amendment, while it says the standard, yes, you will serve on two committees, again, with the inclusion of those words and to the extent practicable, that opens the door to a number of different considerations that may occur, that one alderman will come forward to the mayor and say, "I cannot serve on two committees." I don't think that's probably going to happen in the initial time here, but it's possible that over a period of time, by reason of family considerations or employment situations, any number of considerations, it could happen. But I think the, if we don't use the word shall, there's no reason for any of these amendments, because it just completely leaves it open to have service on three committees or service on one committee. I would rather see us start this process fulfilling what I think was the set-out here in order to expand the opportunities for the alderman and in order to spread the workload a lot better, and I think that's what's happening here in regard to serving on two committees.
Alderman Franco.
So, I'm going to put you on the spot here, Mr. Mayor, and I, this is a hypothetical, but based on what we've been talking about, if we had an alderman that says, "I can serve on two committees, but I can't serve on that Wednesday one you wanted me to serve on, that means a three," would that be a case where we feel that would be, that would be extent practicable, said, "I'm not going to change committees because I like the setup I have on the other committees, then you're serving on one, I'll find somebody to fill that spot." I'm just trying to look at the real potential situations as opposed to, you know, a gray area, and just kind of throwing it out there, because I'm looking at scenarios, and that seems to me probably a realistic scenario, that said, "I got time, but I don't have time when you have, want me in that committee, hence, put me on another one," and then our response, your response would be, "Well, I have those committees set up, I'll find somebody else, thank you very much." Would we consider that to be an extent practicable, and everybody's mind, and I'm not an attorney, so you guys let me know?
You know, I, I don't even know the definition of extent practical. Council, can you give a definition of what that means?
The language, as I indicated at Committee the whole, is to allow for the recognition that there are twenty-five proposed committees blocking spots, and there are twelve aldermen or thirteen aldermen, thirteen members, if the mayor had been permitted to serve as a member of the committee. It's obviously, looking at aldermanic members and only aldermanic members, it's impossible for each alderman to serve on exactly two committees without having a space vacant. So, practical, practicable was to allow for that. The reality of the situation is whether the language of the ordinance says one, between one and three members of the committee, the city council will always retain the right, at least under this ordinance as proposed, to vet and to vote upon the mayor's nominations to the committees. So, I guess to that extent, the word practicable really depends on what the city council thinks it means at the time that the mayor proposes the committees, just in the same way it, between one and three is within the committee, within the city council's discretion to approve the mayor's appointments at the time that he submits them. There's numerous bites of the apple for the council to work with the mayor to arrive at a slate of committee appointments that work, some require legislative, and none of them require ordinance changes. It's just really a matter of which solution the council and the mayor want to reach and how they want to get there.
All right, so, I'm still confused, but, so, I, so, I guess I would go back to that. Do we, I guess, I guess I would ask my colleagues, do we feel that the scenario that I painted, that somebody could serve on two, but I just can't serve on that one because it doesn't fit my, my schedule, and we feel the other committees are set up appropriately based on expertise and how the chemistry is going to work and how we're going to get things done, would that be a case? Do we feel that's a case where it says, "I'm sorry, we're on one committee, I will fill somebody else in that committee?" Because I think that's a realistic situation going forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman LaFche.
Since you're, Carl, I think, what I think what's important here is we set up a system for the future. We have two new aldermen, and they thought they were going to serve on one committee. If we don't say every alderman's going to be on two committees, then each time we have an election, is it, do they take off six times a month for three committees, or do they take off two times a month? So, it, it's not fair that, you know, they're not going to know what their obligations are. If we just say, "Everybody's on two committees," you take off twice every other week, then they know what it is, and I think it'd be fairer to not have people run for office and not know where they're going to be, so...
So, I would say that when you, when you become an alderman and you're on a committee, but then you're going to be an alternate on a committee, then you're basically on call for that, so you really don't know.
No more alternate, no more alternates, we're having no more...
No, 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 I'm just saying, well, you're talking about what we perceive, but what I'm saying is we've done that in the past where you don't know you're going to be an alternate, so there is the unknown there, so it's not as though we haven't had the unknown in the past. We have had the unknown, and you just deal with that. But I would believe that if we, if we had an alderman that says, "I can't be an alternate on that committee," then we would work with them, and we'd find somebody else to be on. So, the fact that there is, you know concretely you're going to be there, that's not how we've been doing the business in the past, because there's always been that somewhat of the unknown based on the alternate.
Alderman Yamas.
There's a couple of concerns. The first one is with the discretion for deciding to the extent practicable, who would decide that? Because maybe my situation is different than Alderman Mesiacos' situation. Would that be up to city council, to the alderman to decide, the way it's written now?
Counsel. Counsel within our book.
I believe practice in the past, once you're appointed to a committee, then the chair would meet with that committee many times over the past, during my time on this council. The chair has proposed moving up a time, moving back a time. The chair and the committee try and work out a situation that will work for all the members, and I think most people on here have been a part of that, either having your committee meeting moved up a half hour, moved back a half hour, somebody needed to get there in traffic or from where they were that day, and the group makes it work with the guidance and direction of the chair of that committee. So, there could be, of course, a case where someone's appointed to that committee, they try and work out with the other members on that committee, they just cannot make that time and day, and then it would be up to them to say, "I absolutely cannot sit on that committee," and then it would go back for another appointment.
So, I, I think, then, what makes your point, Alderman Bug, that if we just made it one to three and, and worked it out amongst the aldermen, then that would, it would meet the same goal, it would meet this exact same goal. There's a motion on the table, can we call, can I call a vote? I move to call the vote. No, everybody's not done yet, still talking.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Hartburns.
I recall years ago, government operations meeting at nine o'clock in the morning, we moved to four. Finances meeting at three o'clock, it was on, four o'clock on Wednesday, and one of the members could not meet on Wednesday, so we moved to three o'clock on Tuesday. I'm sure the committee could make the change, just, you know, and the chair would have you, if it's needed, but right now, we're trying to figure out shall and may, right? We still, we still on shall and may? And then, look at shall, shall said should, and may said might, so we're going, we're voting for shall and may, right? It should be may.
We have a motion on the floor.
Alderman, Alderman Franco.
And I'm, and I'm not trying to muddy the waters, and I know that we've been flexible in the past moving times. You move times for three people is, is less of a problem than it is moving times for five people. So, I'm just saying, that's another element that we haven't had to deal with before. If I can move my schedule and Alderman O'Connor could, that's fine, but now we have two more people that may have to accommodate one, so I'm just saying, that's another issue, as we bring up to historical perspective, that's not quite the same. I'm just throwing it out there, because it's a little bit more complex.
Alderman Yamas.
I think that we can't ignore the, the fact that we have different backgrounds. It's been mentioned, we have two new aldermen, myself and Alderman Smith up here. We did come in with the, the idea that we would be on one committee, that's now going to change. If it's going to two, luckily, I have a flexible schedule, so I can make that work, but some other aldermen may not have that, they may have different family schedules that they need to, to stick to. So, if we have it serve on one to three, that offers more flexibility. If there's someone that's retired and is willing and able to step up and be on third committee, I don't see the problem in that.
Alderman, Alderman Jenkins.
The thing that I see here is that I, I propose that we just leave it, and I'm, I mean, I'm wordsmith, and, you know, when you extend practicable, and that's like, you know, you want to get squirrely on some things, and I don't think people want to be able to, you know, we, we're, it's not about that. You know, either, we come here, yeah, we came in here looking at whether we'd be on one, two, whatever, three committees, yes, it's a part-time gig, yes, it doesn't pay a lot of money, but, like someone told me the other day, you decided to run, so this is the responsibility you have, and suck it up and do it, and that's what we must do, so let's stop muddying the water, let's leave it the way it is, and, and let's, let's get, let's get going, let's move forward.
So, just to be clear, a vote yes would be a vote for Alderman O'Connor's amendment, which would be shall, and two members. A vote no would be, would remain at, would remain at one to three members, is that correct?
One to three committee assignments.
So, there's been a motion and a second. Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Alderman Yamas?
No.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
No.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
No.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman LaFche?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
No.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Four A's, four, I apologize, seven N's, four, seven A's, four N's.
So, the amendment as put forth by Alderman O'Connor with the language shall and two members is hereby approved. Is there an additional?
There's no more after this. Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend Section Two, one twenty-three, Standing Committees, subsection B, in the sixth, eighth, seventh line, beginning after the word appointments, the statement in making appointments under this section, the mayor shall recommend the appointment of the mayor pro tem to the Rules Administration and Procedures Committee. In the event the mayor pro tem desires said appointment, the mayor declines, I apologize, in the, if the mayor shall recommend the alderman, I'm sorry, let me start again. In the event the mayor pro tem declines said appointment, the mayor shall recommend the alderman with the longest continuous service other than the mayor pro tem for appointment to said committee. That's I so move.
Second, there's been a motion by Alderman O'Connor, seconded by Alderman LaFche. Questions, discussion, Alderman Franco.
I have a couple of concerns with that. We just voted to keep the legislative and executive branch separate by keeping the mayor out of the standing committees. This seems to be very inconsistent with that, when we're saying the mayor pro tem, whose duty is to fill in for the mayor, shall be the person to be on that, that committee, that extra committee. That doesn't make any sense to me, that seems, it just seems inconsistent with what we are trying to accomplish. Not that he is the executive branch, but it doesn't seem like that's quite appropriate based on what, what we're trying to accomplish. The other problem I have is that is I don't see that we would go into, and I know it's not called seniority in this, but the longest continuous service for the next person, if the, if the mayor pro tem, if we want that route, could not serve, to me, that's a seniority-based system, and I, and I think seniority-based system is wrong. I think seniority-based system does not get you the best results. I think that it should be up to the mayor to put on that committee whoever he thinks was the best fit to make the team more productive in the end. So, I would object to both of those, because I don't think it's consistent, and I don't think we get the best results necessarily.
Any further questions? All right, this, all right, so, just to be clear, a vote, what is the language currently, counsel?
Currently, right now, Mr. Mayor, without the amendment, the mayor has the discretion to appoint the aldermen to different committees, and has the ability to appoint an additional alderman, so that, so that somebody serves on three committees while everybody else serves on two.
Any alderman?
Any alderman. At this point, that's within the mayor's discretion to nominate and the city council's discretion to confirm.
And Alderman O'Connor's amendment would specifically make it the mayor pro tem and the most senior alderman in the case, the mayor pro tem. the most senior alderman in the case the mayor pro temp is unavailable.
It would be effectively a per se appointment for a person who is the committee, who is the person who is the pro temp to serve on that committee or instead the senior alderman. So it would, it would essentially leave the mayor with 24 appointments around the point.
All right, well, so a vote yes would agree with Alderman O'Connor, a vote no, it would remain any alderman could be appointed to, to the RAP committee. Alderman Yamas.
This is both, I guess, a comment and a question. I don't see how we're going to reconcile this section with the previous amendment that limits alderman to two committees. If the previous language or from the previous amendment said two aldermen shall serve on two committees, we add, then leaves us with 24, so we have that one extra spot. So the, the 25th person here, it's going to be an alderman because the other amendment said only aldermen can serve on the committees. So then now where does that leave us? We're going to violate the, the new ordinance the minute we pass this.
The way to address that would be to read the language together, and I think that's what Alderman O'Connor had in mind, term practicable. Because it's not easy, it's not possible to divide the alderman evenly into two different spots. It would not be practicable for anyone to serve on two committees. The issue is the manner in which that additional spot is filled and whether or not it's going to be a per se appointment or something still within the discretion of the mayor to nominate.
Alderman.
In honor of my daughter-in-law, who's an English teacher, originally I submitted it and with a semicolon after the language in regard to committee or aldermen serving on two committees, semicolon, except, but a corporation counsel indicated that the manner in which these three amendments would come together in regard to that would be made clear that, yes, two committee assignments, but we have the specific designation that the mayor pro temp is to fill that fifth spot on the, on the Rules and Procedures. At least that was my understanding. Is that Mr. Correct, Mr. Vanstry?
The leeway for filling that second spot, for filling that additional committee spot. Right now, the, the leeway from the first two amendments are we know that the mayor may not serve as a, as a member of the committee, and we know that each alderman, to the extent practicable, will be on three committees. What is now up for discussion is how is that additional, that 25th spot filled? If this ordinance is not adopted, the mayor would appoint that 25th spot, whatever committee it happens to be on, it doesn't necessarily need to be on the RAP committee, it can be on any of the committees. He would fill that in the same manner he fills every other committee appointment, his part of the slate that he's submitting to the council. So it would be all 25 appointments as well as the chairs and the vice chairs of those committees, and then the city council would have the opportunity to vote up or down. What essentially this would do is require the, the mayor to nominate a specific person to a specific committee in addition to the 24 other appointments and the designation of the chairs and the vice chairs.
So any questions, more questions, comments? All right, there's been a motion and a second. Just to be clear, vote yes would be to make it the alderman pro temp and the most senior alderman. Vote no would be any alderman would be able to serve at, be appointed by the mayor to be the extra person on the RAP committee. Based on the language, any practicality language. Clerk, can you please call the room?
Alderman Yamas?
No.
Alderman Asiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
No.
Alderman Seville?
No.
Alderman Harpers?
No.
Alderman Smith?
No.
Alderman Buck?
Yes.
Alderman LaFcie?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
No.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Five As, six Nays.
All right, so that motion fails. All right, and the language will remain that any alderman can be appointed on the addition, as addition on the RAP committee. Are there any additional items on, oh, I'm sorry, are there any other amendments? There are no further amendments to come? Are there any, so are we just going to vote on?
At this point, absent any more discussion or amendments, you can take the vote on the underlying proposal as amended.
All right, so is there a motion to, to vote on the underlying motion based on the amendments? There's been, there's been a motion by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderman Harpers. Are there any question, discussions? Alderman.
I just want to say that I really thought this process worked out very well. I thought everybody got to give their opinions. I like how Alderman O'Connor broke down the amendments, it made it, it made it very understandable, and I like the comments from all the committee members. So I, I think our finished product will be pretty good. I'm very happy how this turned out because it was a nice process from start to finish.
No further questions or comments. Clerk, will you please call the room?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Asiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Harpers?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Yes.
Alderman LaFcie?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven As, zero Nays.
All right, motion carries. The ordinance is hereby adopted since 1977. All right, are there any other items under new business, clerk?
No further items, Mr. Mayor.
All right, at this time, clerk, Matt, clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Yes, we do. Per cent to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city, the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comment. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting. First speaker is Joan Solms.
Ms. Solms, you have three minutes to speak at that microphone right there.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, that microphone right there.
Okay. This is for your information, I sent a letter to the mayor because there was a transgender union in Washington, DC, that has passed out flags, that they want to replace the veteran flag with. I did my research, two of our congressmen said we hang both flags, one said he would replace veteran flag with the transgender flag. For your information. Okay, the other thing is I sent the letter to the mayor because this Mr. Cacarelli, who upset the mayor by his moving to Aurora, I said he does need penance, and I suggest for his penance that he come over to the abortion clinic, get on his knees, and pray for those mothers who are about to terminate the lives of their sons and daughters. And I thought that would be a fitting penance for him, and I welcome him and become him. Okay, and I would like to mention that we're going to rename, the pro life is going to name the pride parade, the abortion parade, because it's not homosexuality that's dividing us, it's abortion. And they're using the rainbow flag, which is covered with blood, not in reality, but in essence. I, I saw the whole parade. I didn't see anybody in that parade, that was polite. They were all pro-abortion, and we might as well recognize that is the main problem here in Aurora. And we also, we are opening a clinic, the Waterleaf Clinic, to help the mothers and their children born and unborn. And I hope you will honor them here and bring them in and give them the same eye you give to everybody else. Okay? And then there is a priest, Father Calik, over in Resurrection, the pastor over at Resurrection Chicago, he's been removed because he burnt a rainbow flag. And they had been in our sanctuary, or his sanctuary, by a pastor who was pro homosexual and who was found dead through his toy machine. And now who got punished? The pastor, because he removed it and the parishioners wanted it burnt and he went along with it. So we're getting punished for that. And this is what's going to happen, what can I tell you? Thank you.
Do you have additional speakers, clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, no additional speakers. The requests and, the request referrals are sent to planning council. They're, next to my mic. Excuse me a second. Oh, my notes. Planning commission, is there a motion to accept the file? Treasure report, there's been motion by Alderman Harpers, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. All in favor? Motion carries by vote, voice vote. Is there a motion approved and paid the bills? Motion made by Alderman Harpers, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Clerk, is there any motion discussion on the bills? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Asiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Harpers?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Yes.
Alderman LaFcie?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven As, zero Nays.
All right, motion carries, bills are approved. Is there a motion to adjourn? Been a motion to adjourn by Harpers, seconded by Alderman Seville. All in favor? I will see you guys across the room.
Even though you have the right to say, "I am a racist," you can call me a coward if you want. I am not a coward, I've never been a coward. No, no, I'm going to tell you not to listen to me. That hate speech is not appreciative. And just because I'm using my, my freedom, not listening to your hate speech does not mean I'm a coward. Just remember that.
Yeah, they are so different than hate.
Just remember that.
Yeah, hate speech is different. I didn't want to say that. What did you? You should have listened to me.
All right, all right. Well, then you crossed the line. So you know you crossed the line.
Right. We'll do.
How you doing, man?
Yeah, I was just saying, we're, we're going to sort it out here. It's just, it's, it's because the, the lead position is getting switched around now, you know, people are getting, feeling like they have more, you know, authority than they do.
I don't know why it's fair.
Yeah, but now we're getting to points where there's more than one lead at the same time, same. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah, I'll make, I'll make sure of it, too. Right. Okay, thank you very much. Bye.